Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education, January 29, 2024, public hearing on the proposed closing of Beverly Hills Elementary School. Board will move to 1.01 and I'll call this meeting to order. We'll move to 2.01, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members will move to 3.01, I need a motion to adopt the meeting for this, the agenda for this meeting as presented.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Ms. Escobar, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved. Board members, we will move to 4.01, which is our public hearing. Under North Carolina law, the Board of Education is required to hold a public marrying, meeting and hearing when a proposed proposal is made to close a school. That is the purpose of tonight's hearing. Speakers will be called in the order in which they were signed up to speak. Please come to the podium when your name is called. Comments must be related to the proposed closing of Beverly Hills Elementary School. Individuals may speak for three minutes and persons speaking on behalf of a group may speak for five minutes. When I call your name, I will indicate the time, the amount of time you've been allotted. Speakers may address the board only one time. We recognize that this is an important topic and that our decision will have implications for years to come, that is why it's important that we hear comments from the public. This is your time to speak, not ours. For that reason, board members will not respond to your comments. We will have, we want to have time for our discussions later. As I said, this is your time to tell us what you think. We expect all comments to be respectful of both the process and the individuals involved. Disagreement can and should be expressed in a civil manner. I'm sure that I will not need to remind anyone of that, anyone of that tonight. Again, please be ready to go when I call your name so that we can hear from as many of you as possible during our allotted time. We'll start with the first speaker, Scott Pageant.
Good evening, I am here to speak, I know it's not about Coltrane Web tonight, but I did serve at Coltrane Web for nine years and Beverly Hills for 15 and those were the best years of my career. I want to thank the school board, I know you all have worked hard on this and I have been through many realignments and this is the most thorough realignment study I've ever seen and I applaud you for that. And I know that you didn't sign up to be all about school construction, but that's the way it is right now, but maybe when this is over, you can get back to doing what you really want to do and that's improve education. Four years ago, this room looked about like it does now, maybe more, but it was standing room only and a room full of supporters. There were former students, parents, grandparents, just people from the community that were here because they were interested in Beverly Hills. As a matter of fact, about 15 former students were here speaking and they were now in their 40s, former students of mine, and they spontaneously decided to sing the school song, which was amazing. I'm realistic to know that there's no big pot of money that you have, that you're funded by the county commissioners for new schools. They've been very generous in the last few years dealing with growth. I'm happy that now we're looking at some old schools that need to be replaced. I know that those commissioners are going to be real tight with their money and they don't want to see one penny left and that puts you all in a bind as far as keeping Beverly Hills open, I understand that. Back when those rumors were going around, more than four years ago, it was talking about closing Beverly Hills. Unfortunately, a lot of teachers, good teachers, left Beverly Hills because of that, they wanted to go ahead and find another school and that was a shame. It was like a cloud hanging over that school and the cloud has really persisted to hang over that school and here we are again, four years later. I know that one board of education cannot bind another board of education to do something and I know there's new information that you have to consider when you're making decisions. I completely agree that Beverly Hills and Coltrane Web need to be replaced and unfortunately they're not safe in the way the world is today. There's too many doors that open outside and that invites, let's say, I'll call them uninvited guests that you might not want in your school. Friday night, I was just ready to throw in the towel and say, okay, it is what it is. And then Saturday, I decided to just ride over to the school and I sat there and I thought about the memories and I realize you don't make decisions based on emotion, I understand that, but I thought of all the memories and I thought, you know, it was unusual, the neighborhood was there, it was called Beverly Hills Neighborhood. They decided they needed a school there in 1953, they built a school. And it just so happens, the first principal decided to build a house beside the school. That's really unusual. A lot of good things happened there. Another thing, I decided to get out that recording and look at that meeting that we had four years ago, when it was decided we were going to keep Beverly Hills open and build a new school in '26. And the other thing that just sort of put the nail in the coffin, so to speak, I mean that's not a good choice of words, but one of the former students that was sitting right up here at Beverly Hills now has a second grader at Beverly Hills and she sent me a picture the other day of her daughter who was standing on the stage at Beverly Hills getting an award for academic performance. So now, she's pulling for Beverly Hills to stay open. I also realize that you can't make everybody happy and I know you're in a tough position, I don't, don't envy you. So what I'm going to say is, I'm going to request that before the next meeting, you go back and look one more time with eyes wide open and look at a way that you could possibly keep Beverly Hills open and build a new Coltrane Web. Look at a way that it would work instead of why it won't work. If you, whatever decision you come to based on that, I hope you'll make the right decision for the right reason. Thank you.
Matthew Chisholm.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Chisholm and my daughter is a first grader at Beverly Hills. Over the last two months, we as a public have heard time and again how the decision to realign and close Beverly Hills has been a data-driven decision. I have pored over that data and sent several counter arguments back to the county, only getting a handful of responses from a few board members. So once again, and on the record, I want to read some of the most important data to consider before you vote. Beverly Hills has a 68% economically disadvantaged population, an FCI index of 83% and 85% utilization rate, student travel 1.3 miles on average. Also, over the last five years, these are Beverly Hills academic growth rates, 89.3, 92.2, 86.6 and 90.7, all four have exceeded growth standards for the state. And what story does this data tell us about what is happening at this school? To me, it is pretty clear, we have a small, old school with a low income base that is consistently exceeding its standards year after year because its students live in a close and safe community, end of story. What the district should be doing if they are truly data-driven is figuring out a way to replicate this model all over the county. Instead, we have been told the building is unsafe, not world-class, or that the site is unsuitable for construction. Also, we have been told from the superintendent and others that if we don't approve Scenario C and approve it now, we will be capping schools and running out of room. This is not true. The truth is that five of the seven schools that are the fullest will actually show a net increase in enrollment after realignment. And though this data is useful, it is not the only way or even the most inspiring way by which we can view the importance of Beverly Hills. What I consider much more valuable are stories, stories tied to memories from actual people and here is one of my favorites. Those of you attended Beverly Hills may know of the Family Star Party that occurs every year down the lower field of the school. During this event, students gather after sunset near the playground for a night in the dark to stargaze, use telescopes and eat smores. Volunteers from the Charlotte Amateur Astronomers Club come with their very expensive telescopes and for some reason, let the kids actually use them. This event is one big exercise in community. It's an incredible blend of science, tomfoolery and engagement. And if you close this school, this has gone forever. The Family Star Night is not something that is easily replicated. It is tied to that school, to that landscape and it works precisely because the school is small. It serves the site of memory alongside hundreds of others that is embedded in that ground so you can keep your pre-K center and your pocket park. We don't want them. What we want is to serve our community, maintain the bonds that have tied us together as neighborhood for the past 70 years and to rebuild our community stronger than it was before. Thank you.
Lee Schuman.
Sorry for my tardiness tonight, my daughter forgot something at Concord High School, decided to go take it to her. We all have things outside of this that we're handling in our own business. We've given you guys a lot of detailed information and all of that, here we are fighting for some kind of justice to be served in any form. I want to talk you through a few points that we're going to probably give to you guys later in the week before you vote. The only way a combined school can be justified is if you swing these kids together as a whole entire school unit somewhere, just like you're doing for Coltrane Web and bring those kids back together at a combined school. There's only one problem with that. In Scenario C, the new enrollment for Coltrane Web is 456 students. There are 331 kids at Beverly Hills Elementary School this week. That's 787 kids. The new school we're showing, 756, not even big enough to hold them because that's the only thing that'll fit on that site. Something doesn't add up. Two 450-seat schools on these two properties accomplishes the 900-seat goal and the recommendation by the company we hired and said what's needed. I think we can do that for $55 million. You guys know my history versus the $50 million, 750-seat school and you get 900 seats instead of 750. We need to treat these two populations the same, that's the only equitable thing to do. Why redistrict one to three different separate schools and not, and take the other one as a school unit and swing them inside another school? We talk about equity all the time in the school system. We need someone with courage to stand up and say equity, true equity is what we need to do for these kids. Let's not treat one school one way and one another. Let's don't disband one school into three different schools and tell them, someday, you may have the opportunity to go to a school, a brand-new school. Someday has never come for these people after so many someday promises. We need to have courage to do what's right, fair and moral. This is one of my favorite books and I hate politics, but courage was a virtue that Kennedy thought was pretty incredible and I do too. This book is one of my favorite books. It tells of people who in their own time recognized what needed to be done and did what they needed to do because it was right. Stories of people who in a great time of moral crisis did the right thing. All we do is talk about money and education, that's the true inequity, saying money trumps what's best for education. That is unconscionable to me. We spend money on things that don't matter, 45-foot atriums somehow is a commitment to our educational excellence. We should spend less money on the bricks and sticks and more on the people inside of them. We are advocating for smaller, cheaper schools. We want enough space to educate our students as NCDPI recommends, not more. We're advocating to spend more, spend less and get more, not the other way around. It's frustrating when others think we're advocating for this county to spend more for us to get what we want, when what we want is the county to spend less to get what we need. I know courage when I see it, it's the most admirable trait of any politician and these people tonight need a hero, maybe not even somebody on this board, maybe somebody they can't even see, somebody to say, I don't have all the answers, but I know courage and I'm going to do what's right. I still have faith in our political leaders, but the older I get, the less courage I see and that faith wanes and what's left is just hope. These people tonight are so hopeful for someone, anyone who has the courage to stand up and do something in the most awkward moment, stand up for them and do what's right, to do what's right for them rather than themselves. This OS group is full of people who have that same courage because they're doing what is right for other people, not themselves. And that's the hope they have because that's all we have left. Thank you.
David Burpey.
Good evening. Over the past several months, you have been presented with numerous proposals. The proposals the community presented to this board included the visions of proposals presented by staff as well as the goals of the district. The community presented this board with creative options to keep Beverly Hills in its community serving students. Our proposals have been met with resistance and reasons why each will not work. One proposal in particular proved that Beverly Hills can be rebuilt on its site at 500 seats. When this proposal was submitted, we were told that the current construction guidelines state that elementary schools should be 800 seats. I understand this point if we are discussing adding new elementary schools in growth areas. However, Beverly Hills is a replacement school in an established area with steady enrollment projections. We need to think creatively when looking for solutions to serve our unique communities. Despite current construction standards dictating that middle schools must be 1,200 seats, in 2014, when Mount Pleasant was being discussed, there was not a need for a 1,200-seat middle school in that area of the county. It was determined that an 800-seat school was what was needed and an 800-seat school is what was built in Mount Pleasant. It opened in 2017 and the enrollment in Mount Pleasant Middle is at 659 students today. Mr. Treadaway, you fought for the Mount Pleasant community during that time and rightfully so. Not too long ago, you stated, quote, "As the retired principal at Mount Pleasant Middle School, I remember this all too well. We came dangerously close to not getting the beautiful school we deserved. If it had not been for the strong support and leadership of elected officials, I fear the school our students enjoy today would look much different," end quote. As you weigh the pros and cons, think of the Beverly Hills community and the high percentage of disadvantaged students it serves. Do these students deserve the same exceptions that we made for other parts of this county? Are you comfortable closing a successful Title I elementary school, community school, and merging those students and future students with three other Title I schools in this There are 100 different creative ways to solve the problems of this school system that are placed on the shoulders of the Beverly Hills students. Permanent closure of this school is not one, it is not one. They should not bear the burden for you all to fill your seat utilizations throughout the county.
Thank you.
I have faith that each of you understand the impact your decision will have for generations. Thank you for your time.
Wes Hartzell.
Good evening, I come to you tonight speaking with somewhat of a pedigree as my grandfather, Robert Lee Hartzell, served on this very board for 34 years and my dad, Harold Hartzell, served on the same board for three terms. I carry on this family legacy of public service as I'm in the eighth year as a commissioner on the Norwood Town Council in Stanley County. I have learned from my family how important decisions are in all areas of government. The decisions that were made by them as well as those that we all face, elected officials can be at times difficult and controversial. Unfortunately, there are no cut and dry answers to some questions and I respect the struggle that you may have in making some of those decisions. There are times when decisions are based on financial reasons and other times when the good of the citizens should override any financial considerations. Closing Beverly Hills should not be based on any financial criteria, even if it were, knowing how projects go, the plans to change the facility as presented would inevitably cost more than it would to keep the school open. So why am I here? I have a grandson that went there, I have a granddaughter that goes there now and I have twin grandsons that are to start kindergarten next year. There has never been anything but praise for this school from the parents of my grandkids. I visit the school to have lunch with my granddaughter often and I'm amazed at the friendliness of the staff and even the friendliness of the kids on my visits. They all welcome you into their world. Being the size of the school that it is, you can tell that everyone there knows everyone else and cares about everyone else. I'm amazed at all the growth that we see in the county and I fully understand how difficult it is to provide services to this exploding population. I was born and raised in Cabarrus County and a former student at the Old Bethel High School and yes, I am that old. The population explosion unfortunately dilutes the communities and the wholesome way of life that I experienced growing up. This growth continues to destroy the great core values in a way that is wholesome and good. We should do everything we can to preserve this way of life when we can, but changes are inevitable. In planning for the future, consultants were hired by the recommendation, the superintendent and his staff, whom I remind you worked for the Cabarrus County School Board, who in turn worked for the voting taxpayers to represent all areas of the county, areas of growth as well as existing areas of the county and to do best what the kids need to be done. There is a disappointment in the way that the process has gone, is it limited input that was allowed by those who wanted to be heard with this only changing at the 11th hour? In the end, the choice in keeping Beverly Hills open really has no effect on other schools on the master plan. In the end, keeping this wonderful school open with its legacy, its teachers, its students, its friends.
Thank you.
By financial choice to help facilitate growth in the area.
Thank you, Mr. Hartzell.
But as the board, you should make the decision to keep it open. Go Bulldogs.
Julia Chisholm.
I'm Julia Hartzell-Chisholm, my daughter's in first grade at Beverly Hills. I'm here to ask you to not close Beverly Hills, a permanent decision that will have negative impacts on student success and their families. Since November 28th, I keep wondering, how did CCS come up with closure? What was that conclusion? What questions were asked and how were they even answered? After all, typical reasons for school closure are poor performance, low enrollment, lack of teacher retention and failing facilities. None of these apply to Beverly Hills. Is our building old? Yes, but is it failing in a way to warrant an emergency closure? No. Has a Cabarrus County done anything to improve Beverly Hills in recent history to improve its function and safety? No. Was it unanimously voted to be replaced by 2026? Yes, it was and we have been waiting. While we have waited, teachers, administrators, they've been taking these Title I populations, 68% economically disadvantaged, they've been successfully providing them with excellent education, exceeding growth standards the last five years. And now I see, we've asked the wrong questions. The right questions are, would recognize Beverly, all Beverly Hills accomplishes. What is making Beverly Hills succeed? If Beverly Hills is doing so well that they are teaching other schools about STEM, why isn't our demand to preserve this? What we are asking for is equity. Equality gives everybody the same thing. Equity, equity assesses the needs first. It allocates resources accordingly to try and make things as fair as possible. We've spent decades waiting on meaningful facility updates and ultimately, we've waited the last six years, waiting and believing we would finally receive what was truly needed and deserved and that is replacement. Closing this school will dismantle what is good about Beverly Hills, it does not provide any student with a better option. Closure will effectively communicate, it doesn't matter what these teachers and administrators are doing, especially in these difficult conditions. I believe the board's responsibility is to be fiscally responsible, but not at the expense of quality of education. Cabarrus County Schools has the opportunity to make a larger positive impact. Rebuilding Beverly Hills and Coltrane Web, including pre-K, solves more problems, it creates more opportunities for more students. The Mary Frances Wall replacement at our site, it doesn't increase capacity, it doesn't offer more pre-K, it doesn't even give more kids with higher needs more spots. Replacing Beverly Hills as a pre-K 5 is equitable because it assesses needs and responds accordingly. It acknowledges past promises and past negligence. We keep hearing from board members, we got to think about all 35,000 and all the kids that are coming, but closing us, you're not thinking about all 35,000. You got to think about kids that are here, right now, today, in that school. If there's a way to do what's right and good in other parts of the county, realign as needed, but also still meet the needs of Beverly Hills and the City of Concord students, you need to make the right decision, do the most good for all students, rebuild Beverly Hills.
Adele Vensel.
Hello, my name is Adele Vensel and I'm the AIG teacher at Beverly Hills. I grew up in a small town in Pennsylvania and it has had a profound effect on the person I and teacher I am today. Now, for those of you that are not from a small town, let me tell you that everyone knows everyone, I mean every house and every person. Maybe some of you can relate. As a kid, I loved to ride my bike around town with my friends. My mom had two rules. One, never ride on the main road and two, be home for supper. Well, when I was in fifth grade, my friend and I decided it would be a good idea to take a shortcut and ride on the main road. We thought, we're 11, why not? I'll never forget what happened that day whenever I got home and my mom asked me, where had you been riding today? And I gave the nondescript answer, around town. She then proceeded to tell me that she had three calls from our neighbors, one of which was my principal that lived on the main road, to let her know that I was riding on the main road and not following her rule. That was the day I learned I wasn't going to get away with anything in a small town. Well, a few years later, I was riding home and I lost control of my bike and went down pretty hard on the sidewalk right in front of Mrs. Austin's house. Remember, every person, every house. My knees were bleeding, I was crying and I really needed help. As I was walking to her front door, she was already opening the door and asking me to come in so that she could help me get cleaned up. That was the day I learned that someone would always be there to help me in a small town. When I decided to leave that small town, I carried these lessons with me and knew I wanted to be surrounded by people who would always be there for me when I fell and help me when I went off track. When I became a teacher, this wisdom is what brought me to Cabarrus County Schools when I moved to Charlotte. I've had the privilege of teaching and working at several of our neighborhood schools. I started my teaching career shared between R. Brown McAllister and Coltrane Web Elementary. I later had the opportunity to teach and be a part of the Royal Oaks Neighborhood School and have been at Beverly Hills since 2021. What I notice and love in a neighborhood school is how similar it is to my small-town childhood. Every person in the school knows everyone else and where they live. At Beverly Hills, this is shared knowledge. We don't have a culture of my students, your students, it's a culture of our students. This is what brings us our success. This is what brings us our success. We are the second highest elementary school for growth in the district, right behind Odell. Although I'm far from that small town, I know this board was elected and will help us and let us know when we've gone off track. Thank you.
Alexa Paisley.
Good evening. My name is Alexia Paisley. I'm sixteen-year-old in a Beverly Hills Bulldog. I moved down from upstate New York when I began fourth grade. Confused and alone, I was struggling to manage my emotions and make friends. Luckily, I had the privilege of going to a smaller, community-based school where they cared about me and did not set expectations about being the best. There, I joined and participated in VEX Robotics, the Science Fair, Battle of the Books and Science Olympiad. I was able to navigate the challenges of growing up in this smaller, controlled environment, surrounded by adults that I trusted who provided exposure to different cultures, problem-solving methods and fine arts. I'm now a musician of five years, an artist and a proud student of the IB program studying Chinese, US government and politics. Being in IB, we value community, believing in a global mindset and that starts here. Beverly Hills being a model STEM school of distinction recognized by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, gifted me a foundation specifically in math and science that would carry me through COVID and beyond. They taught me to think outside the box, recognize patterns and ask questions while teaching me to accept failure gracefully, seeing it as room to improve, not a reflection of my worth. And so when I heard that Beverly Hills was in danger, I knew I owed them. So I had some questions. What did I have that other kids need? What would they lose? Beverly Hills specializes in growth and that's what makes them special. As a high schooler, I've watched my friends crack and burn out due to one bad test grade. As we grow up, we are told as students, only the best will be chosen and we are filtered out by potential and always being afraid of being left behind. The only reason I've made it as far as I have is because of Beverly Hills. I remember the times my teachers had to walk me through basic constructions. I remember being praised for my growth and my effort and I knew if I ran back into that school scared and afraid, they would help me. Beverly Hills treats its students as people, not numbers on a page to make them look good or reach a quota. They protect them from individuals that have forgotten what school's about. Me and other previous Beverly Hills students have repeatedly gone back to Beverly Hills, volunteering for STEM night, field day, trick or teach and many other events. Bonding with a variety of BHE students, rehashing memories from familiar events, singing together in December or simply remembering being young. I recognize the difficult decisions adults have to make, but as a teenager stuck in the middle, I know what it's like to be left behind. I know what it's like to be told you're expendable. I've seen what happens to kids who were not supported like I was, who dropped out because they felt like they were unworthy when they were told resources were being wasted on them or because they were not a high flyer and left to fend for themselves. Don't take this away from them. Don't take this from me. This isn't just the three hundred elementary students, this is the hundreds of Bulldogs spanned over generations. This is a family that has adopted so many kids. I plan to go back this year to help with field day and I plan to do more elementary and high school interactions. Hopefully next year, you'll come down and see.
Kiki Shade.
Hello. I'm Kiki Shade. I have a fifth grader, a first grader and a three-year-old, hopefully another Bulldog. We heard a lot about dominos the last time we were at this board meeting, the cost impacts for not destroying our school if we don't do this, dominos. I'm here to discuss those same dominos that you will be responsible for and impacting our children. After all, that's why we're here. The first domino is continuity. These kids were sent home during COVID without a plan, but they knew the ground and the friends they'd walk back to after a time of uncertainty. What is the plan you want to share with these children now? Next is opportunity. Tear down the walls of Beverly Hills and you haul the rubble. Haul along with the rubble, opportunities for our babies. One less four-H club president, one less spelling bee contest, a science fair, optimal class size, hope and trust built by each and every Bulldog teacher and confidence and relationships set with their guidance counselor. Some of these kids barely have a chance and you'll flip them on their head again to start all over. Finally, a sense of belonging. Today, our children belong, they are family, we are all Bulldogs. They are friends, they are your community too, not just the adults in the room. A community that had no feedback incorporated into proposals delivered by consultants, you heard them. No consideration was incorporated back in. They heard what we had to say, they even put them in little bullets on a slide, but they changed nothing. An agenda driven completely by efforts that don't care about the real dominos set forth by the long-range plan Phase One. Continuity, opportunity and belonging, all terrible dominos. Tearing down Beverly Hills is the easy decision. By doing so, you put the burden on our children. The analysis that our school is not ideal, is not an ideal location is wrong. Seventy years of educational excellence says otherwise. Find a way, Board of Education, to do the hard thing today. Get good at hard. That's my New Year's resolution. It's a borrowed slogan from a basketball coach, but it needs to be your motto too. This is not easy. All the priorities, all the money, all the consideration, what's best for all of our Cabarrus students, it can be overwhelming. But don't knock down our students in pursuit of the easy solution. Save Our School proposed Beverly Hills rebuild at thirty and a half million plus Coltrane at thirty and a half million to sixty-one. Proposals A, B and C came in at sixty-one and a half million. Don't elect the choice that destroys what we're built into a community and overcrowds an already congested Coltrane Web environment. You know what's best for our Beverly Hills students.
Thank you.
Save our school.
Rebecca Ramsey.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Ramsey and I was born and raised in Cabarrus County. I jokingly say that if you were born or died here, you knew my parents because my mom was a Lamaze coach and my dad was the chaplain. I'm here today because my son is at Beverly Hills Elementary and my fourteen-month-old daughter, I hope one day will be. We purposely moved to this area with the intention of going to Beverly Hills. Our reason being because we've heard so many good things about it and to be able to have a small community. We've heard a lot about community tonight and I think the piece about community is so important, it can't be lost. Community is something that impacts us from our childhood and on. And if we know anything about human development, any theory in human development, whether it's Erickson or attachment or anything like that, human development at this age is about continuity and consistency and autonomy. It's about teaching kids how to interact with peers and how that indeed impacts their ability, as you've heard tonight, to be able to have a sense of self and a sense that doesn't crumble the minute they hear the word no or the minute that they're challenged with something that's adverse. It teaches resiliency, but we can't do that, in my opinion, in a classroom that's the size of thirty. We can't do that in a large facility that doesn't constitute community. I challenge that we can build schools that are, at least elementary schools, that are smaller, that are more community-based. SOS has provided so many examples that I've been incredibly impressed with, that it provided us examples of us to be able to get to that. But if we are looking at a thousand plus for elementary school, I think that that is lazy. I think that's non-creative and I think that really takes away from our kids. Not only does it take away from our kids, it takes away from our teachers. We continue to ask our teachers and our support staff to do more with less. That's not fair to them. They're already here. I kind of, I've been in healthcare for twenty years of my career and I jokingly say, if a nurse is still there, it's because that nurse loves what they do. If a teacher or one of our support staff is still here, it's because they love what they do and they love our kids. So we need to be able to be a support to them. What I'm asking here is for us to think about how we're using our money. Bigger is not always better. Again, in my experience in healthcare, bigger often means we have more mistakes, we have more sentinel events and sentinel events means deaths. We usually, bigger usually means there are more errors. So my hope is that we don't look at the forty-five-foot atriums. Think back to your own growing up. What mattered was not the aesthetics of the buildings and where you were taught. What mattered were the coaches, were the teachers and were the relationships and peers that you made. Please look at that as you're thinking about Beverly Hills.
Thank you. Sadie Porter.
Hello. My name is Sadie Porter. I have lived in the Beverly Hills neighborhood since two thousand sixteen. A big part of our home buying process revolved around where our children would go to school. Beverly Hills was an amazing selling point. I have two daughters there now and hopefully my son will go there for kindergarten in the fall. Our experience there has been absolutely amazing every step of the way. Most of the conversations surrounding the closure of Beverly Hills revolve around utilization and maintenance, but one important factor that really needs to be discussed is the actual students being shuffled. They're being referred to as district numbers and seats to be filled, but we need to remember that they're people. They're kids who will one day grow up to be adults, to be taxpayers, to be voters, to be productive members of the community. I voted for some of you on the belief that you cared what was best for our students and I hope that that is still true. Now, they're being uprooted while watching other schools in the area get upgrades. My third grader is absolutely thriving at Beverly Hills, her small community school. She's in AIG, she's in Science Olympiad, she's moved on to the second round of the Science Fair. She stops on her way to class every morning to greet her old teachers. Her amazing media teacher has been able to get to know her, not just her name, but know her. She knows that my daughter reads well above her grade level, that she loves to read scary stories. Would she have the chance to know these individual characteristics if she had double the students? Things like this are important because it helps to foster their individual needs. This goes for all of the staff there. She has a fire for learning because of her experience in her four years so far and I don't believe her experience to be unique to her. So what happens when she is suddenly shuffled to a new school with double the students in order to fill a seat? What happens when she is no longer able to get the individual attention to foster that growth? Does she lose that fire? And if we put that fire out at the elementary level, do you really think we can get it back as they get older? Meeting the kids where they are is so important, not only for the kids who need extra help, but the gifted kids as well. Beverly Hills understands this and is successful in it. Keeping it open is a benefit to the community as a whole. Thank you.
Amber Williams.
Good evening. I'm coming to you as a former EC teacher, a former preschool teacher and a parent to a Beverly Hills first grader. I'm here speaking for the families who are not able to speak. My son Remi will be okay, no matter what your decision is here tonight. The children who are not going to be okay is the students from the disadvantaged homes. The children who see this school and these teachers as the one constant in their life in their chaotic world. You have an opportunity as the board to do something really amazing here, to incorporate preschool into two new Title One schools. As a former teacher, two new, two main fundamentals I always stand by and come back to are scaffolding and meeting students and families where they are. Last week, as I was researching how preschool within the elementary school could truly make a difference, I came across the Every Student Succeeds Act. Within this, evidence shows that students benefit from continued system of early learning from birth to age eight. Young children often experience discontinuities as they move through early grades, especially transitioning from preschool to kindergarten. Now I come back to scaffolding here. If we could have these students come into Beverly Hills as two-year-old babies for intervention, give them the early childhood education intervention and experience and have them move through the same building with the same related services, administration, counselors and teachers, there would be no disconnect. You would not lose six months trying to figure out the best way to help a student with his communication disorder when he's just not responding to everything you try. He would pick up the same speech pathologist from preschool who could serve the entire school. His teacher would be able to walk down the hall, have a conversation with his preschool teacher regarding problems in the classroom. What worked for you? How do I work with this child? The teachers, the students would be able to visit the classrooms before in order to make smooth transitions. As an educator, this type of continuum is priceless. You have a chance to leave your legacy, to meet these families where they are, in their neighborhoods, in their communities, in the elementary school districts. Not have them traveling across town to a standalone preschool. Half of these Title One communities don't even know the preschool exists. All of you have the ability to vote to replace this school in this community with a preschool. Vote to move Beverly Hills as a whole to the Old McAllister Building. Vote to keep these children together with the teachers, administrators who know them and truly love them. Vote to keep the one constant safe place for these children.
Sarah Connor.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Connor and I'm the media specialist at Beverly Hills. Two weeks ago, I shared that as the librarian, I connect to my students through books. While helping students find a love of reading is my greatest mission, I also believe that it is crucial for my students to understand how to research and seek out accurate information in a world of misinformation. Just last week, fifth graders discussed the importance of using credible sources to find their facts. In last week's meeting, it was said that Beverly Hills is not and was never a magnet school. Whether intentional or not, with or without malice, incorrect information can be detrimental in decisions like the one before you tonight. Beverly Hills became a STEM magnet school in two thousand sixteen after an increased demand for more STEM seats in our district. Beverly Hills served as a magnet school from two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen when the district wanted to close us and moved our seats to Wyancoff. This school year, Beverly Hills is a magnet school again. According to the Cabarrus County Schools District website, on the STEM department page, a chart shows you that if your home school is Beverly Hills, Bogart, Royal Oaks, Wyancoff or Irvin, the STEM school you attend is Beverly Hills. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, two hundred and forty-eight current students and forty-two rising kindergarteners completed a school choice application for STEM. Two hundred and ninety students dedicated to a STEM education here at Beverly Hills. A North Carolina STEM School of Distinction Model School, a VEX Robotics team, a Science Olympiad team, multiple gardens and outdoor learning classrooms, partners with state organizations and local businesses, all to create real-world learning experiences for our students. The education that Beverly Hills provides matters and should be continued. Our school's growth, our commitment to STEM, our ability to address our students' needs, it matters. Mr. Floyd, I voted for you enthusiastically in two thousand twenty-two largely because of the comments you made at a school board meeting on August twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Told you I'd do my research. You said, "I don't envy you for all this that you're having to deal with and go through. I know it's a big responsibility. I could quote studies, I could show you graphs and charts, but none of that captures what's real and what matters about community schools. It's more than a statistic. It doesn't fit in a box. It's who we are and it's what makes us different." I said, "I don't envy you," but I actually do because you have a chance to stand up and do something right and make a real difference. Mr. Floyd, school board members, I believe that tonight you have that chance to stand up and continue a school that is making a real difference and that is a fact.
Courtney Stonberg.
Good evening, Board. I'm here tonight to ask you not to move forward with the closure of Beverly Hills as presented. I'm a parent of a Wyancoff Elementary student and I'm very involved with the school. I've had a great opportunity to see the work and love that goes into our students every day. I've also seen the struggle that comes with a high-needs population. Our students are by and large caring, compassionate, welcoming and fun. However, we have our fair share of students who come from challenging environments and backgrounds. Some of our children can be aggressive and defiant. I've witnessed the best and the most challenging situations and I've seen our staff deal with each in the most professional and caring manner possible, but they are tired and they are stretched thin. With the closure of Beverly Hills, Wyancoff will receive some additional students and very high-need students at that. Our classroom sizes will increase and that's not in Our classroom sizes will increase, and that's not in the best interest of our students. There's been no plan given to add staff to Wyancoff in the event of this move, and in fact, as you heard in your last meeting, some of our specialist positions that have actually helped with our most difficult situations may be cut. Also, as a school and PTO, we've worked diligently this year to increase family engagement and are proud of our growth in this area. If you move forward with a transition next year, it will be impossible to truly welcome and engage students and families as we would like. So I ask that if you're truly set on closing Beverly Hills against everybody's request, that you target the 25-26 school year. Targeting the 25-6 school year will allow for our district to be an example of how to do this right. Imagine with me for a minute, in this next several months, you can lead by getting all stakeholders together, school boards, county commissioners, city councils, sewer and water, and maybe you can discuss how we can slow our growth so it's sustainable. Maybe our 10-year plan can become a 15-year plan, and instead of asking for an additional 30 million a year, you can ask for 20. You'll be able to truly incorporate this historic neighborhood and their desires while retaining the great memory of Beverly Hills and possibly get a little buy-in while you're honoring them in their history. Also during the time, you can secure funding for these plans. While I see these big buildings and big new buildings, I'm also fully aware the county commissioners didn't agree to fund this, at least not this year. In fact, they're talking about going revenue neutral. This plan will require a tax increase, and that's not happening this year. It's an election year. Finally, waiting will allow schools that are receiving displaced children to give them a warm welcome. We can invite them to see our events throughout the year, get them some school swag, get their parents involved in PTO. We can make sure they're comfortable navigating the halls, the lunchroom, and the questions and concerns can be addressed. We want this to be a good experience as possible for all children and their families, but we can't do this if this change is forced through for next school year. One final note, in an entrance of transparency, I would ask that all board members who have children or grandchildren attending schools in this district disclose how their realignment plans will impact them, if at all. Thank you.
Hello, School Board. My name is Ebony Jedon. I'm a Beverly Hills parent. Couple of years ago, when we were visiting this, I wrote a letter to the board, and I'll sum it up for you. When I moved to Concord, I was told, you know, well, I asked, "Where do I send my kids to school?" And everyone told me a charter school. Okay, so I researched the charter school, went, applied, and got accepted. Fine, kids are in school. For whatever reason, something led me to find out what was going on with my local school. Found my local school right around the corner was Beverly Hills. Went to the school, met then-principal Amy Still, grilled her and every kindergarten teacher in there. I fell in love. I was like, "Oh, my gosh, this is where we need to be." Shortly after that, I found out the school was closing. No ma'am, no sir, not after all the research I had done. So I started going to meetings and gatherings, and so I came across a lady, and these beautiful signs that you see that a lot of people have that say SOS, I asked her about it. She said she had a maid. I expressed interest. She asked me for my address. The sign showed up in my yard. I was so proud. After that, I went to another meeting at a school. The name escapes me, but I had a very rambunctious kindergartner and a firecracker pushing, well, I was pushing a stroller, pushing her in a stroller. So a man walks up to me, and he says, "Do you think she wants the color?" He whisked her off to the back of the room, where I could pay attention to what was going on in the meeting. So he had my child occupied. This man that I've come to know was Dr. Wells, which you know was, which was the principal that ended up being a principal at Beverly Hills. So, school is saved, all is well, the desires of my heart were met. Let's see, then, you know, after that, you get kids, you know, talk about closing a school, you got kids they don't want to wear what you want them to wear, they don't want to eat what you want them to eat, they don't want to go to the park that you want them to go to. But one thing that they don't do, they don't ever complain about school. They're happy with where they are. They're happy that they're there, and I'm happy that they're there. So, coming forward, I talked to now-principal Mr. Baden, yes, Mr. Baden, and he says it is a matter of the school is not up to code. I understand that. I will lay whatever brick you want me to lay, I will paint whatever you want me to paint. I just ask that you keep our school open. Our kids need it. I appreciate you letting our first round of kids age out, but we have kids that are still there, that still want to be there. Give us a date. Tell us 2029. Just give us some time. Closing it now gives us high anxiety. Our kids love where they are, our parents love where they are, our teachers want to be there. So I just ask that you save our school.
Good evening. My name is Laura, and I'm a parent of a second grader who attends, sorry. I'm a parent of the second grader who attends Beverly Hills Magnet STEM Elementary. When I was attending the meetings to discuss how we were going to plead our case about keeping Beverly Hills open, I was approached by a peer who said, "You attend every meeting and support the cause. What are you passionate about makes you show up?" My response was simple: I can relate to these students. It's good if you can't. When I was a child in elementary school, my family moved often. I changed schools three times during different years. This caused lack of confidence, distrust with teachers, and ultimately had me left behind in multiple grades, which only further hindered my educational growth, my relationships with peers. My mom had to work overtime often to keep us going. The school was far, and a lot of the day was spent on the bus, traveling from one stop to another. My mom knew I was struggling, but being the provider of the family did not have time or the resources to help me. I decided I wanted different for my child. The school located in the Beverly Hills neighborhood allows for quick transportation, strong relationships to be built within the community and the school. I've been blessed with the opportunity to volunteer at the school two times a week. Although my child is not the one that needs this extra attention, I will still show up to help the other children that I relate to, those struggling even at this young age. With the opportunity, I have seen children who could not read the word "us" or speak English, start to read faster, better, and comprehend what they're reading within weeks. Shutting down the Title I school and tearing us apart will not only hinder the relationships built and community spirit, but also eliminate the opportunity for parents like me to spend extra time helping and supporting teachers and students. My point is, taking these children from their school, where they already have strong relationships with teachers and staff, where they feel comfortable, safe, and where they enjoy being, where it may be the only structure and consistency in their lives, may negatively impact the children that can last the rest of their educational years. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katie, and this is Theo. He's in second grade at Beverly Hills Elementary School, and he has been since his kindergarten year. I'm a pediatric OT practitioner, and I work in this community for a decade, working alongside schools and preschools in this area to provide therapeutic services to children with varying diagnoses and general delays. I also even provided preschool services, teaching to a local community school that my son attended, in efforts to be involved with his education and the education of the two classrooms that I was entrusted to. Many of my former students are a part of the Beverly Hills School and the community, so it goes without saying that when our school district began talking about making large changes that would affect these children's day-to-day lives, my son included, I quickly became concerned. As a parent, a community provider, an educator, and a concerned community citizen, I felt it important, though I'm shaking, to stand here today in front of you. When enrolling Theo in Beverly Hills, I was excited that he would be attending a smaller school with smaller classrooms. Our teachers are tasked to reach the minds of these children who are just so easily distracted, and if you know Theo, you know that that's true. Our children, these teachers, they have to be just as entertaining as electronics and technologies to impact our children's little worlds and teach them foundational education concepts. This is more achievable because our school environment is less distracting without a larger class size. Recently, Theo was diagnosed with ADHD. I've had to work closely with his teacher, his counselor, his principals, all of the support staff at Beverly Hills to be sure that he had the unnecessary accommodations and resources to help him be the most successful. Can this new plan guarantee me and my son, standing right here by me, the same support and attention to his special needs despite the larger classroom sizes and the settings that is being proposed in these possible scenarios? I typed up some other stuff, but I just wanted a quick caveat that Ms. Taylor Carey, she didn't have to say this, but she quickly scheduled his 504 meeting for me because not only is she eight months pregnant and looking amazing, but she's here tonight, probably having to pee, but she's here. And she did, and his teacher and his counselor, they have done everything for him to make sure that he is successful this year. And I don't know that that's going to be the case wherever he gets bussed off to. A smaller classroom size allowed that teacher and all of his teachers to better individualize his experience and all of the students, to maintain his attention, all their attentions, to provide them with support as they grow and experience and learn, and as they grow and work with all these families who have the capacity that they specifically need. I cannot understand why a board whose main job is to make sure that we educate these children would assume that closing a school who is able to provide smaller classroom sizes and bust those children to other schools creating larger classroom sizes is a good choice. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you all for meeting with us concerning the potential closure of Beverly Hills Elementary School. My name is Preston Porter. I'm a third-generation product of Cabarrus County Schools. My mother also taught English at Concord High School for 22 years. My family is one of many who live near Beverly Hills, where my two daughters are currently enrolled, with my son expecting to start kindergarten there this fall. I understand you all have heard many wonderful stories about the love for this school we all share, and without going into anecdotes about our experience at the school, I will simply say that the last four-plus years there for us have been nothing short of outstanding. The praise the school gets is well-earned. This school is worth saving. Recently, I came home from work late one night to find my normally cool, calm, and collected wife uncharacteristically upset. "Uh-oh," I thought. I wonder what I did or didn't do. Before I could ask what was wrong, she informed me, much to my shock and dismay, that the future appeared to be very bleak for Beverly Hills. Since then, we have attended meetings and talked to many neighbors and people in the community, and so far, based on the conversations that I've had, is that the most popular thing about the idea of closing Beverly Hills is that it is wildly unpopular amongst the public. Save for the Cabarrus County School Administration, I'm aware of no one who fully supports this. An idea that does draw overwhelming support, however, is allocating some funds and a maintenance timeline attached to some accountability to address some of the safety concerns that have been discussed at these meetings. Another well-received concept is to make pre-K an option at all Cabarrus County elementary schools, including Beverly Hills, and that we find a way to rebuild on-site, which would address the future growth county-wide. This being said, I've been in the school and on the playground many times over the last several years, and while I agree it needs some attention, I've never once felt concern for my children's safety, especially not as it pertains to the facility. It has been said that closing Beverly Hills is the equitable thing to do, but I respectfully disagree. Let's talk about equity for a moment. The definition of equity is a state of being just and fair. Equity for our community died years back when many new world-class schools were being built for newer developments while no funding was secured for the ongoing maintenance of our school. The equitable thing to do moving forward would be to rebuild the school on-site with pre-K to match our community's needs as well as the county's. There is no equity for the families of Beverly Hills should it close, and these Title I children who are the most innocent in this will be the most impacted. Where is the equity for them? Cabarrus County Schools and the school board are comprised of talented, experienced, intelligent, and creative people who have their positions because we believe they would have workable solutions for our challenges. Evaluating neighborhood schools as part of your campaign, this is a time to stand up and do what we elected you to do. Please save this school. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Thomas, and I have three children at Beverly Hills. However, my hope tonight is to speak for a group of children who do not live in my home. Children whose parents were not able to come tonight because of work, or only having one car for the whole household, or not being able to follow along with tonight's proceedings because they are not fluent in English. As you've heard many times, our school serves many students in this situation. I'm a family doctor in the area, and I have lots of patients with similar struggles as well. While I'm not their perfect representative, I'm going to attempt to communicate what they cannot. What I'm asking you to do next Monday is to consider those children and what will happen to them if the student population of Beverly Hills is scattered to Wyancoff, Royal Oaks, and Irvin. These are schools with brilliant and caring teachers and staff, but at least two of them are not performing as well as our school. What our students and staff deserve is to be kept together as a unit until we have a new school building. As parents, we trust that Officer Law, Mr. Baden, Ms. Downing, and all of our teachers and staff, including maintenance, will keep our children safe in our current building until we have a new place to move into. The plan to relocate our neediest families to schools that are already full of students, like we just heard, who need extra support from administration, social workers, guidance counselors, teachers, interventionalists, school nurses, and SROs is not a good plan. The overall realignment plan is good, and it does make sense, and it's necessary, but we need a revised scenario C that allows all of us to stay in our current building until we can decide how we can rebuild in the downtown area without hurting disadvantaged students during construction and after. The proposed combo Beverly-Coultron School will be no such thing if we leave the students behind who live off 73 and up 29 near 85. The option to attend a new downtown school that was promised to them will not be a reality for parents who need to use the bus. I'm also concerned that parents wouldn't even hear about this option, because when my friends and I were passing out information about realignment to parents and guardians in late December, over half had not even heard the news that Beverly might close, so I have no guarantee that they will hear, that they could go back to the combo school once they're realigned to other places. We've heard a lot about money the last two months, but when financial responsibility is discussed, and I see some of the aesthetically pleasing but very expensive features of brand-new schools in our area, I worry that what we are communicating to children is we have to cut corners in some places so we can build pretty buildings. Please remember that a chain is only as strong as its weakest link. Let's work hard to keep every link as strong as possible. Don't weaken Wyancoff. They've already worked so hard to become stronger just to get us off the property. Beverly has proven that it's one of the strongest links in the Cabarrus County school system, and that's saying a lot. I went to three Cabarrus County schools, had a mom, mother-in-law, and husband who worked at three other schools, with dedicated teachers who worked their tails off. What's extra special about Beverly is our growth data, which is objective. We should be modeling schools after hours, not finding every excuse in the books to get our deferred maintenance off the ledger. We don't want a fancy school. We just don't want students to fall through the cracks.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak. Thank you for serving in your capacity. I know you've been working hard together, and this is a difficult situation for you. We are here to think about our future. My name is Diane Norwood, and I have the privilege and honor of representing Beverly Hills as their president for the number of years. I share that now as a secretary. We kind of do four years on, four years off with Victor Gomez. He's not here tonight, but that's my honor to represent this. I don't have any children, I don't have any grandchildren going to Beverly Hills, but I'm trying to give you the voice of our homeowners. There's actually over 200 homes in Beverly Hills, but I know Beverly Hills takes in a larger area. I live in a mid-century modern home, built about the time that Beverly Hills, they are built like tanks, and pretty much everybody has had to remodel something. I've had plumbing replaced, I have electricity replaced, and it's known. But would I ever sell my house and leave? No, it's wonderful. And I think we think about Beverly Hills in that same manner. Beverly Hills is a local school, and I think that means a lot. It's a diverse surrounding area, and it has a dedicated supportive staff. It provides a very strong foundation for the school, for the students' future school years. This local school is a glue for our neighborhood. Residents of all ages and local churches and civic groups reach out to their students and families. Local churches offer assistance as reading partners and provide food and clothing to support children that are in need. A local church had organized and trained area residents, many with no children or grandchildren going to Beverly Hills, to volunteer as lunch buddies and allow teachers to occasionally eat together during lunch to share ideas and support. A local, community-centered church is perfect for families to invest time that support staff and students. Please consider these children, the families, while you continue to work together to find a solution that's best for them. a solution that's best for us all. In my business life, I was a project manager of a very large, 29 million, facility build. I know what it's like. It's hard to make some financial decisions that you face when you do some sort of financial investment of that manner. Both my employer and the decisions that you face all boil down to one thing: ROI, return on investment. Return on our investment for our children and the people that they're going to grow into to be, to be an adult. As homeowners in Beverly Hills retire and downsize or age out, potential buyers are looking for a great value to have a successful local elementary school. Many families look at Beverly Hills to purchase homes. In the real estate business, the motto is "location, location, location," and that's what we have here. I believe the best investment is a strong local supportive school that is the foundation for our children's future. Please vote to keep Beverly Hills open as you continue to work together to find the best solutions for all the children and families in Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Andrea Barlessen.
Good evening. So, I had a whole list of something to say, all written out and planned, but as I listen to everybody here, my goodness, so much has already been said. I do want to go back to this, that I listened to the meeting. There are a few things that stick out in my mind from the meeting from January 16. Ms. Escobar, your passion for the kids was very evident. Ms. Blackwell, the fact that you asked so bravely for there to be a Scenario D that has Beverly Hills included. Mr. Treadaway, you said, "School is life to these kids." Absolutely right. Ms. Sandage, what you said as to asking a question, "What is a parent to say to their children who are going to walk through this process?" And Mr. Walter, you asked great questions. Mr. Floyd, you asked, "How is the boiler doing?" In that question, my eight-year-old was there, and he heard. My son, I have four boys in the Cabarrus County school systems, two of which who attend Beverly Hills. I have an eight-year-old and a 10-year-old. My eight-year-old asks, "So what is so unsafe about our school?" And well, I had to simmer that down a little bit so that he doesn't fear going to school the next day. But the deal is, there's not anything that's that unsafe. He's just talking about the boiler, and if it goes out, well, you know, it can't be fixed. I have sent this to you in an email in hopes that it's been read. The deal is, my son is trying to come up with a way to save his school. Why? Because it matters to him. He loves going there, and so does my fourth grader. So I ask you, how is saying yes to keeping Beverly Hills open stopping progress? I don't disagree, Mr. Treadaway. That progress has to happen, and we can't delay in making decisions. Yes, but there are other ways that progress can happen. If you look at Wolfmeadow, they have a lot of property. A wonderful pre-K center could be put there. You have details to think through, and you have hurdles to jump. Yes, you do, no doubt. And making a decision of keeping Beverly Hills open is a huge one on your plate. So to answer your question, Ms. Sandage, of what does a mom say to their kids in a situation like this? So I ask my kids, how do they feel? Afraid. So it is Mr. Rogers that said, "Look for the helpers when you are afraid. There is always somebody willing to help, and every single one of you are the people that my son sees tonight looking to for help. Please save Beverly Hills."
Laura Schuman.
Good evening. You guys have gotten here a lot today about a lot of perspectives, and I think that's awesome because, you know, perspective really is an amazing thing and is a gift when you'll listen to it. And understanding other people's perspectives does take effort because that's not intuitive. And as you've heard, the greater Beverly Hills community has some unique perspective that we really like to share, and we really want you to consider it as you're making your final decision about our school. Friends of mine in other communities want to understand why I care so much about Beverly Hills, since my youngest child's actually in the fifth grade, and their perspective is that decisions about the school don't really impact me anymore. And I tell them that for me to feel that way, or for us to feel that way, would be to turn our backs on all of the children and families who rely on that school, and that we should all care. When reminded of that perspective, they all agree wholeheartedly. I'm a believer when it comes to the benefit that the school offers to the students that you've heard a lot of people speak of, and I'm blessed that I've been able to experience it myself through my kids to shape this perspective. I know not everybody has that, and that's why we share it with you tonight. But I have some other experiences that have given me a lot of perspective. I volunteer at an agency that you probably know, that is a local agency that helps students with school supplies. I'm not going to name it, but one time I was tasked with organizing backpacks from a big backpack donation campaign, so that was a lot of fun. So some of the backpacks, we were pulling them out, some of them were brand-new, still in the bag, tags on them, nice and shiny, and some were gently used, but, you know, there were a lot of them, unfortunately, that were in really bad shape. You know, busted zippers and just torn up pretty bad, and the staff told me, "Oh yeah, you just throw those away." And I said, you know, "If the goal of this campaign was to help children have a functional backpack, why would someone donate something that was in that kind of shape?" And I will never forget what they said. This is what they said. "Sadly, there are people who think that needy children ought to be grateful for anything they are given, no matter how bad the condition, because they think those kids don't know the difference." Listening to the debate about Beverly Hills actually takes me back to that moment. We cannot beat those people who will give a kid a broken bookbag and expect them to be grateful for it. I mean, are our children not deserving of more than just the scraps from somebody else's table? It's up to the adults in this room, those of us who know the difference, to advocate for these kids. And we know our county can and should do great things for every single child. I don't expect other communities to instinctively know our perspective because we don't know theirs, but because we all should care about all the children, we've listened and supported when they needed their schools, and now we're asking the county to rally around our students. Thank you.
Elizabeth Trautman.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Cabarrus County School Board, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Elizabeth Trautman, and I am a fourth-grade teacher at Beverly Hills Elementary. Before I go on to say all that I have to say in these three minutes, it's important that I tell you how I came to be a part of Beverly Hills. I am in a unique situation, not only as a teacher, but also as a parent to students in a neighborhood school and the spouse of a Bulldog alumni myself. My children attend Culture Web. Last year, I began my first year as a teacher in Cabarrus County Schools on an emergency license to teach. It is because of that year that I continued my journey and am currently in my last semester on track to be licensed of my own accord. Part of that decision involved choosing a school in which to complete my student teaching. Part, despite a wonderful school and supportive administration at my old school I interviewed at Beverly Hills, as soon as I stepped through the entrance, I could feel that there was something different happening within the walls of that space. It was a sense of belonging, of family, of a cohesive unity, reflecting such that every individual would without doubt stand to support the whole. While I grappled with what to do for this year, my mind kept coming back to the sweet neighborhood school and how safe it felt. If it felt safe for me, I know it is safer still for the students who learn there every day. It needs to be known that there are people in the world choosing education right now when others are turning to run. Furthermore, I was acutely aware that the time I might spend here could be short and that its future was unknown. Still, I was compelled to choose it, uncertainty and all. I know I am here to be a part of this decision, to give a voice to the students of our school who otherwise won't be heard. I stand before you to express my deep concerns regarding the recommendation to close our cherished school. It has become more than just a building. It is a thriving community that fosters exceptional growth in our students, and it's been proven. Over the past few years, we have achieved remarkable success, surpassing district and state expectations. Superintendent Dr. Kopecky rightly acknowledges that our achievements are not solely attributed to the building, but rather to the strong sense of community among faculty and students. I have witnessed firsthand the positive impact our school has had on students who have transferred from other institutions. One of those very students is in my class, and he reminds me daily as we pass under the sign that says, "Our school has been here since 1954." It's clear that the close-knit environment at Beverly Hills Elementary contributes significantly to student success. While I understand the district's goal of pursuing cost efficiencies through larger schools, I urge the school board to consider the long-term benefits of maintaining smaller neighborhood schools. The sense of belonging, personalized attention, and community support provided by schools like ours cannot be easily replicated in larger institutions. As we've demonstrated through our exceptional growth, the best educational decisions are not always the lowest-cost decisions. Investing in our school is an investment in the future success of our students and the overall being of our community. Cabarrus County has grown. We hope you'll choose us.
Quint Lachlaire.
Last one. Greetings, folks. My name is Quint Lachlaire. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Dr. Kopecky, for hearing me today. I was just here four years ago, and some things have changed, some things haven't. One of the benefits of going last is, I feel like I can just do the wrap-up, kind of tie it in a bow. A lot of things have already been said, so I'm just going to hit some bullet points, and I'm going to put my little two cents on at the end and leave you folks with that. I'm asking for the rebuild of Beverly Hills, put the money into Beverly Hills and Culture Web. I backed those community schools. I'm a beneficiary of those community schools. I went to those schools, my brothers and sisters. We were academically successful. We competed on a big stage with kids who went to private schools. We did well. These schools are our community. They anchor them. They're like the Belk at the mall. You don't want them to leave. The community changes. They end up being our jewels. These schools become jewels. It's hard to measure that from a consultant standpoint. What does that mean? It's felt, and it's a very real item. Realignment is happening, and it's a good thing. I'm glad that the consultants came on board to show you some of the different options that are available, and the realignment isn't just with the school students. There's a realignment happening nationally where people are leaving certain areas and they're coming to areas. In the past three and a half, four years, North Carolina is in the top five of those areas. Where in North Carolina are they coming? Concord. So these capacity issues, I think, if you do want to talk about capacity, there is something to be said about having some capacity in your back pocket because they're still coming, and I'm not sure how the consultants measured that. My old dad used to tell me, Quentin, if a problem can be solved with money, it's not really a problem. It's an inconvenience, it's problem-adjacent. We, we have certain things that are troublesome, but there's some things like the, how the neighbor, how the neighbors, they don't complain about these schools. It'd be different if they said, "These schools make so much noise, I can't sleep, I work second shift, I spend too much time on Georgia Street by Culture Web and up by Beverly Hills. I know those neighbors. They love it. It's worth something. It's valuable." Cabarrus County, we have resources. We do. I can take you two hours to Robson County where my parents grew up. They got nothing. So just let it be known, I'm not saying we're rich, but we have resources. Equity, what are we really fighting for? People have options now. We want to keep these people in our public schools so all the children benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, that concludes our public hearing. I will move to 5.01 and call for a motion that the meeting be adjourned.
Same move.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Treadaway. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.